A little toasty in here?
I'm fine.
Got you, thanks.
It's just our side.
Must be you.
It's just our side.
Yeah.
We have a vent over here.
H O T T.
Yeah, we're fine.
We're good. We've got the vent right here.
Yeah, we got this.
He'll have like sickles on him. He's already celebrating for his smiling.
Jimmy's cool.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
It is one o'clock, September, November. Yeah, November 16th, regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
And it is Commissioner Euler's turn to do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Garden City. Be with our first responders to keep them safe and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth and greater glory of you for your service. We ask these in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Next item is the approval of the minutes. Any changes on that? I didn't see anything. They all stand approved as presented. Public comment, item five. This is a time where we set aside time on the agenda for people to come forward and speak on items that are not on the agenda. We do have a number of speakers, a number of items on this item. First up, go ahead, Matt.
Mayor, first of our scheduled public comments. Bert Moore, Kansas Department of Transportation Deputy Secretary and State Transportation Engineer is here to officially report that the intersection of Kansas Highway 156 and Jenny Barker Road, Mary Street, has met warrants for a controlled intersection. Well, I tell you what, instead of me telling you what he's going to tell you, why don't I just invite Bert? Bert, thanks for coming out. The microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, members of the commission, thanks for having me here. Yeah, Matt pretty much said it, so I'll go ahead and drop back five.
Sure, yeah.
No, but really, it's good to be here. We, you know, I know this has been a long time coming at the request of the city, and for reasons, you know, engineering reasons, safety reasons, it just didn't meet the, it wasn't appropriate to put up signalization. Now is the time. We're working with Matt and your Public Works Department to get a solution in here. They've submitted plans for signals. We'll be reviewing them shortly. There will probably be some lead time to get that done. In the meantime, we will be putting stop signs on 156. It will be a four-way control intersection until the traffic signals are installed because that's the next logical progression. And you know, we're doing this in, because of safety, right? That's the only reason that we would install these. And so I just want to take one minute, and I'm not asking you to make a decision by any means, but I do want to propose another solution for you to consider, and that would be a roundabout. You know, it's just, it's, again, it's, the idea here is to make a safer intersection, right? I feel, I believe in my heart, that a roundabout is a safer solution. I'll just give you a couple instances, and you think about it. You know, many fewer conflict points, and the conflict points are, as an example, you've got a north-south-east-west route, you've got the north-south direction of east-west, that's a conflict point. In a typical four-legged intersection, there's up to like 32 conflict points. In a roundabout, that can be reduced down to about eight. The collisions that do occur, there will be collisions, there's no doubt, there will be collisions at any four-way intersection, but the collisions in a roundabout are slower speed, they are not T-bones, they are not head-ons, they're more of an angle crash that are, and as you can imagine, they are less potential for serious injury or death. And then, you know, some of the advantage to the traveling public is there's no need to come to a complete stop if there is no other traffic there present. You know, in the middle of the night, non-peak times during the day, trucks coming through are not making a complete stop, they're just, you know, going through the intersection. So again, that's just another option, and I'd just like you guys to think about it. If you do decide you want to pursue that, discuss it, look at more information, don't hesitate to get on to it, okay? I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this time.
Well, I have a question. I know that roundabouts are generally, are they twice the price of a general signal? Or, because I know that was a concern when we first talked about this.
You know, Councilman, generally, yeah, it will be more expensive. It may be even five times as much. I would tell you right now, we would pay for a roundabout, K dot, 100%. So, that's how strongly I feel about it.
I think one of the other concerns too was the fact that emergency vehicles getting through a roundabout, is that an issue? Have you heard?
I don't believe so. I've not heard that, no. For sure, we would, we would, we would look into that, okay?
Any other questions? You stated earlier that you were going to put up stop signs at the intersection?
Yeah.
Is there a date when you're looking at doing that?
I want Ron Hall, our District Attorney, to work with your Public Works Director to get that. There's a, there's a, a period of time where we need to let the traveling public know, hey, stop signs are coming, so they're not unexpected.
Right.
So, it takes a little while, but it can be implemented pretty quickly.
Okay. Just, I just want the public to know that
Absolutely.
there'll be signs going up and, yeah, changes coming.
Well, hopefully like the 156, something flashing coming in, because you know, people travel pretty quick from that. I mean, they're coming in at 55, well, 65, you know, 55.
They're taking a hill.
Exactly, so I would, anything lighted to let them know that you're going to be coming to a stop, I think would be wise.
Yeah, there's a process to go from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. I'm sure that's safe as possible.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for traveling out. We appreciate it.
Thanks for the great news.
Thank you, Bert. Item five B, representatives from Kansas Municipal Energy Agency are present to present Public Works and Utilities Director Mike Muirhead with the Gilbert Hanson Jr. Outstanding Service Award. Paul?
Yeah. Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Paul Mulburn, General Manager of Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, and I'm not here to talk about kilowatts or kilowatt hours. So, that's probably a good thing.
That is a good thing.
So, each year, we have our annual conference, and during that process, we give out a number of awards, and the last two years, we've done the conference virtually. So, our conference was September 30th, and we did announce a number of award winners, and Mike was one of them. So, that award is, those recipients are determined by the membership, not by KMEA staff. So, we've got a number of our members here. We've got Dwayne Banks, who was actually the Awards Committee Chairman, he's from the city of Russell. We've got Tyson McGree, who is our current President of KMEA, and he's from Colby. And then we've got Greg Dumars, who's the ex-president of KMEA from the city of Linsburg. And I'm going to, since it's the membership that's giving out these awards, I'm going to turn it over to Greg. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this award to Mike today and during the commission meeting. I do prefer former as opposed to ex. But it is my honor to be here today to present to Mike Muirhead the Gilbert E. Hanson Outstanding Service Award. This award is named in honor of Gil Hanson, who is the first, excuse me, let me start over. The award is in honor of KMEA's first General Manager, Gil Hanson, and is presented by KMEA to a recipient who, over a period of years, has made significant contributions to municipal joint action and is recognized for contributions to his or her community, the electric utility industry, or public power. And with Mike, it's all through, all of those. In his 11 years here in Kansas, Mike has been deeply committed to improving the power of water and wastewater utilities in your community and also in the state of Kansas. He has provided leadership on several major projects since coming to Garden City, including the development of the Jameson Energy Center and its three combustion turbine generators. Since 2011, Mike has provided strong leadership to KMEA, serving on the Board of Directors, including serving as President, or serving on the Executive Committee, and as the organization's Secretary Treasurer, Vice President, and President. The Power Supply Committee, and the Joint Board for Administration. Under Mike's leadership as President of KMEA, the agency has acquired Midstate Energy Works and started up the KMEA's first electric line crew, bringing these much-needed services to the, to the membership. As a constant and respected voice for municipal utilities, or in legislative circles in both Topeka and Washington DC, he has been involved in numerous legislative efforts to advocate for the advancement of both Garden City and municipal utilities across the state of Kansas and the US. And I would like to add that Mike is truly a champion for Garden City, truly a champion for municipal utilities across the state of Kansas, and for public power across the country. Mike has been a tremendous asset to the agency, but I think my favorite part that I get to say is I also get to say, Mike is a friend. So, Mike, congratulations on an award well deserved.
Nobody else wants to be there.
All right, on three. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right. Thank you. Yep.
Item six A, the governing body is asked to, well, I guess we can check and see if there's any other public comments, sorry.
Is there any other public comment at this time? All right, none being, we'll move on. Six A.
Item six A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, as match day in Garden City.
Yeah, I move that we approve November 30th, 2021, as match day in Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I know we have a number of representatives in the audience. Would Connie like to speak on this before I read the proclamation?
Thank you so much. This is wonderful news. Our fifth match day this year, can't believe it, and it's growing. It's actually already going on. We already opened the online giving site, which is open until the 30th, through the 30th, I should say. So, online giving is already going, and the real match day itself is on the 30th, as she just proclaimed. And that is an in-person event again. Last year, it was not possible due to COVID, but we're happy to do it in person again in the Hotspot Event Center here on Eighth Street. So, from seven in the morning till seven in the evening, people can stop by and visit with the nonprofits that are all having their booths on display and talk about their work and their mission, and we would love to see everybody again there in person and just celebrate this wonderful day of giving. And I wanted to stress that match day, of course, the monetary giving is always very much emphasized, but globally, Giving Tuesday is also really meant to be a day of giving back to the community in any way people can, through volunteer work, or just giving to your neighbor in need, anything that you can possibly think of as a form of giving is really encouraged on that day. And we all know that we have wonderful resources here in Garden City and beyond, in the form of many nonprofits are doing fabulous work. This year, we are pleased to have 39 nonprofits participating, which is three more than last year, so that is growing too. And yeah, we're just looking forward very much to it. So, thank you for this encouragement and this support. We really appreciate it.
Do you want me to read the proclamation today or that morning of the event? I've done that before. We can read it today. We'll just read it today. Yes?
I was just going to say one thing, could you touch on the match pool, the size of the match pool this year?
Yeah, happy to. The size of the match pool is bigger than ever. It's our 25th anniversary year for the Western Kansas Community Foundation, so we wanted to dig a little deeper, so we have $100,000 to give away this year.
Wow, that's awesome.
And yeah, that is a proportionate match, so it's proportionate to the total amount that is being received on that day or throughout the campaign. So, if one organization brings in 10%, they get 10% from the match, not to exceed 50% of the total pool. So, no organization can walk away with 50,000, but that's still a nice amount, I think. And that matching portion goes back to the fund, to the endowment fund that the organization has with the foundation. So, that is the savings account, if you will, for the agency, and everything else that comes in through match day will go directly back 100% to the organizations for immediate needs. So, it serves both, you know, short-term and long-term needs, and that's really what we want to encourage. And I think match day has proven its benefit to a lot of the nonprofits, especially through the COVID pandemic, and so many agencies were struggling to keep their doors open because there was sometimes a lack of extra resources. And yeah, having an endowment fund with the community foundation is one way to build those extra resources, so that is the message that we want to bring to the community as well.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I said a question. I know their annual report just went out, and I was, I haven't gotten a chance to look at that. So, I'm curious about what's the current assets of the community? I know it's grown tremendously, which is exciting, so yeah.
I know. It's crazy. Last night, we had our board meeting, and we realized that we were a little over 50 million in assets now.
Oh, my goodness. Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, it's wonderful to see it grow so much, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks to the generosity of many, yeah.
Any other questions for Connie? I'll read the proclamation. The proclamation reads, whereas match day was established as the National Day of Giving on Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas match day is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and match day is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and proper on match day and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Garden City. And whereas match day is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now therefore, I, Roy Sesna, Mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2021, as match day in the city of Garden City, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Sign and seal the 16th day of November, 2021. Roy Sesna, Mayor. We'll get a picture right quick here.
Our social war, blue t-shirts.
Yeah.
Where's your blue sign on? In the back. Everyone ready? On three. One, two, three. Good.
Good. All right. Well, congratulations. I'll have you sign that. Sit down on the desk there. Bring with you.
If you have any questions on those, we'd be happy to answer them. Seven E is a, just a letter of information from Cox that they're obligated to send us as part of their franchise agreement. So, moving on, we're ready for meetings of note. Call your attention to those which would need RSVPs. If you could do those through C-Lin, I would appreciate it. Item nine A is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2543-2021A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2543-2021A.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the Rural Housing Incentive District for Sunset Terrace Phase 1A. And if approved, it would be resolution number 2892-2021. Alicia?
Mayor and Commissioners, as required by the RHID statute, this resolution establishes a date and time for a public hearing, which is a development plan, and an ordinance establishing Sunset Terrace Phase 1A RHID to be considered. As you recall, we set a public hearing and it was postponed. The new public hearing date will be December 21st, 2021, at 1:30. This area has been approved by the state of Kansas to be included in the RHID program. This resolution is the second step. The commission needs to establish the RHID district for Sunset Terrace Phase 1A. Sunset Terrace Phase 1A is generally located south of Sunset Memorials Garden on the west side of South Towns Road. This development will consist of 70 lots in which the developer Sunset Terrace Estates LLC intends to provide lots to build single-family homes. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution 2892-2021.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from C2 General Commercial District to I1 Light Industrial District for the property generally located at 505 South Main Street, Garden City. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2918-2021. Trent?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Trent Maxwell, Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. Today ordinance 2918, and ordinance approving the rezone from the C2 to an I1 Light Industrial District. The owner and applicant of the property is Ron and Darla Leicher. The applicant, Ron Leicher, is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 505 South Main from C2 General Commercial District to I1 Light Industrial District. The applicant would like to add in addition to his current storage building and provide quarters for a night watchman. The property currently has a dog room salon and a safe company and a storage building on the property. Staff analysis, the property is currently zoned C2 General Commercial District, and the current uses on the property can still operate in the I1 Light Industrial District. The comprehensive plan categorizes this parcel as an industrial/commercial/residential and would be consistent with the future land use map. If the property is rezoned, the applicant would need to apply for a conditional use permit for a right, excuse me, for a night watchman quarters, and it is only a conditional use in the Light Industrial District and not a permitted use. The governing body may make their determination according to the criteria in 27.040. Below or in your attachment is a complete list of factors. Planning Commission recommendation, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezone on October 21st, 2021. Eight members present, six voted yes, one voted nay, and one abstained. Alternatives, number one, the governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approval, by approving the proposed ordinance. Number two, the governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. Number three, the governing body may return the recommendations to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. Staff recommends alternative one, there's no fiscal note. If you have any questions, I will do my best answering for you.
Entertain a motion on this item.
Yeah, I move that we approve ordinance number 2918-2021.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Ready for item C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution setting the time and place for a public hearing to consider establishing a tax increment financing district in Fannie County outside the city of Garden City corporate limits. If approved, it would be resolution number 2893-2021. We'll pause just a moment, I believe we need to dial in the applicant, who was unexpectedly unable to be here, as well as their counsel. And if somebody could give you a second.
Welcome to my cell conferencing. Please enter a participant's code.
This is Matt in the city commission chambers, and we're in a public meeting right now. Is, Tim, are you available?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, and it's my understanding there was another?
Kevin Lee should be on the line.
Kevin Lee?
Kevin Lee.
Okay. I'm going to do, I'm going to have you one at a time speak again. Tim, will you speak, and I'm going to see if Jamie can give me a thumbs up if the audio's coming through.
Sure. Tim Hanigan here, coming in from a hotel room in Dallas.
All right, Tim. Thank you. And then Kevin, I think just, my gut instinct is you're going to be a little quieter, so if you could amplify your voice, that'd be awesome.
Sure. Kevin Lee with the Polsonelli Law Firm in Kansas City.
Okay, the audio's good, the audio's good, so let's proceed with this agenda item. We're having a little technical difficulties not related to the phone, so if you could...
I have to come down.
All right. We'll pause just for a couple minutes.
Sure.
Did he fill it? Okay, I just texted out of it because there was a picture that was way oversized, and I wasn't going to enlarge every item, so I just... Okay, all right. Here we go again. So, the, Lana, I'll just turn it over to you.
There you go.
All right.
Because you're standing there.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Lana Devall, Fannie County Economic Development President and CEO. We did include a memorandum in your packet explaining this project. This is a little bit different. You guys have certainly dealt with tax increment finance districts in the past. However, this district is actually outside the corporate city limits of Garden City, but statute doesn't allow counties to establish TIF districts. They have to authorize the city to actually make the designation of the tax increment finance district. So, that may be a little bit confusing, which is certainly part of why we have legal counsel on the phone and available to answer any questions you may have. And we've been working with Dr. Hanigan for several months on this project, and I know he's excited to tell you guys a little bit about it. he's excited to tell you guys a little bit about it and why he's chosen to do this project. So, Dr. Hannigan, we'll let you go if you'd like.
And Tim, I don't know if you've heard that, but if you'd like to talk about the project generally, the mic is yours.
Well, thank you for spending your time this morning, I should say this afternoon, considering this project. So, you know, my background is, it's been smaller commercial development. It struck me some time ago that our opportunities for commercially zoned lots are getting to be few and far between. And high visibility lots that are larger than an acre are really non-existent in our area. This quarter between 1583 receives not just considerable traffic, but it receives more truck traffic in some sections of Interstate 70 in the western part of the state. I think there's a real opportunity here for the community to open up an area that would be suited not just to, you know, outside entities, but also to some local entities who may choose to relocate into a higher area of visibility. I think the, in particular, the truck traffic in that area makes it pretty desirable for businesses that would support the trucking industry, businesses that rely on the trucking industry, and other local businesses that I think are looking for an opportunity to relocate out of the areas that they're in onto new ground with new development in a higher visibility area.
Thank you, Dr. Hannigan.
All right. So, again, you guys are very familiar with how tax increment finance districts work.
The vision that we have for this area.
Sorry?
Yes, that's included in the packet.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hannigan. Again, you guys are familiar with how tax increment finance districts work. The proceeds from the district can be utilized to pay for infrastructure. So, pretty much anything that we think of as horizontal, streets, wastewater, water, electric, light poles, sidewalks, those types of things, the TIF does not apply to any of the vertical buildings. So, the actual buildings themselves will not be included. But certainly, if there's, if there's any questions that you have, either for our team, for Dr. Hannigan, or for Kevin Lee who represents Pulsonelli, which is the law firm representing Dr. Hannigan, happy to answer any of those for you.
Any questions at this time?
Lana, you kind of explained about the TIF on how it works. Some of us do know how it works, but there's others that are listening that kind of don't understand what a TIF is. Can you kind of just go into that a little bit in detail?
Sure. So, the tax increment finance district again is only eligible expenses allowed for that would be infrastructure costs. So, again, pretty much anything you think of as being horizontal. What it allows the developer to do, we start with a baseline, so the amount that the property is valued at today and the taxes that are currently being collected on it will continue to be collected just like normal. The additional property taxes that are collected as it develops, so if we take a parcel that's currently appraised at $100 and we, we build a building on it and now it's appraised at $1,000, that $900 increment, if you will, would be given back to the developer to help them offset some of those eligible expenses. As you can imagine, in a, in a project like this, there is no infrastructure nearby. It's gonna take a significant amount of infrastructure in order to make this property actually developable for commercial and light industrial projects, which is what Dr. Hannigan's looking to do. So, you know, in the packet, we have estimates of, engineers' estimates of what it looks like, those costs may be. Certainly, those could vary and we hope that they're high. We try to ensure that there's always a little bit of a cushion in there because once the work commences and the TIF is in place, they're only able to recoup the eligible expenses. So, any work that's done, those, those receipts are actually what's submitted in order to gain the payment. If the project pays for itself, you know, more quickly than the TIF statute allows, that's great. Then it'll just pay off early. It would be our anticipation that as large as this project is, it will probably take every bit of the TIF in order to get it there.
And, you know, do TIFs, Lana, last for the 15 years or 20 years? 20 years? And so, this was done in, looked like two phases, I saw and noticed. And so, when applicant applies for a TIF, is it the developer that applies for that or is it the individual tenant parcels?
Right. So, and the developer is applying for the TIF in this case and they're, they're planning to put the expense into having the infrastructure in place and then the individual tenants obviously will, will be responsible for building their own facilities within that. One of the common misconceptions that we hear is that, well, how come they didn't have to pay property tax? They do. Every one of the individual businesses within the TIF district pays property taxes. That's the only way the tool works. We have to collect property taxes in order to recompense the developer for his upfront costs. So, again, I think one of the important things to point out is that we've chosen as a community not to put out public dollars in the hope that we can develop. We've instead, in the past and in this instance as well, we've chosen to partner with private developers and give them the tools that we can to help them make the project happen. But certainly, the onus is on the developer to make this project work and to get these lots sold and developed out as quickly as possible, just the same as it is in the RHID tool. They need to develop quickly in order to start those property tax receipts.
It was interesting to listen to the city, or the county commission meeting yesterday as well, but they kind of threw out some interesting numbers as far as taxes goes. And you can kind of compare that to Shoalman with that TIF there. So, it was pretty interesting that, can you talk about the taxes that are being acquired now on this piece of land?
Yeah. And actually, the, excuse me, the, this property just did transfer, the sale of this just took place, so the numbers haven't been updated on the county's website. So, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable actually giving you a number. We can give you the pre-sale number. And it's in your packet as well. But suffice it to say, it's been, it's been being appraised as an agricultural use property. And agricultural use land in Kansas is the lowest property valuation that we have. So, just the fact that we're moving it to an industrial, commercial and industrial use will be a significant, significant increase. But again, it's important to remember that, you know, this is really, from the governing body's standpoint, this is your, and again, the city's not even a tax collector on this parcel, but from the county's perspective, they certainly understood yesterday as we discussed this, that what they're doing is really agreeing to wait 20 years, up to 20 years, if you will, to get the full benefit of the project. But they're getting additional benefits as we go along. Obviously, you're gonna have sales tax collection, you're gonna have job creation. So, all of those things create additional opportunities that, that you certainly have to weigh when you look at incentives.
Yeah, I do want to say that the location is incredible and I thank the plans for this. And so, I just, Dr. Hannigan, I appreciate you being a visionary. I know you've done a lot for the community and then this is just another one way that you're stepping out and, and stepping actually really making Garden City better. So, thank you for that.
The other thing, we've, we've alluded to it, but this was presented to the county and they did approve.
They did authorize, that's correct. Again, because this is a county property, they had to give you the permission, if you will, to step in and designate one of their properties as, as a tax increment finance district. So, this is just the first step of many to get through the process and we'll be back in front of you again, but this is kind of everybody's first opportunity to hear about it. So, we understand if there's a lot of questions and we would agree, Commissioner, this is exciting and it's, it's always fun to see locals who see the, you know, the opportunities in the community and really take a chance, step out to be a part of that.
Yeah, this is big.
So, this is fine.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
Yeah, I move that we approve resolution number 2893 dash 2021 to establish TIF district.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second? Any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Kevin. Bye-bye. I believe the next item would be 12A and we've gone a little bit past the public hearing time. But, public hearing, Mayor. And this is a, yeah, item 1A, a public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to the 2021 budget amendments that are necessary to reflect the 2021 expenditures.
And I'll open the public hearing now?
Actually, we request that we cancel the public hearing.
Okay.
So, in the...
Actually, let me close, let me close it here. Go ahead.
On the November 2nd meeting, the commission approved to set the public hearing for 1:30 today. However, there's a 10-day requirement for a notice to be in the newspaper and that was not able to be accomplished. So, we're requesting that we cancel or more or less postpone this public hearing. We have another item to set a new date for the public hearing for this matter.
Okay.
Similarly to what we had done for Alicia's other item in canceling the public hearing at this time rather than open it and continue on with what didn't get posted for 10 days.
So, that brings us to item 12B and this is your consideration of publishing a notice of budget hearing for the, for amending the 2021 budget to reflect the actual 2021 expenditures. And the proposed date for the public hearing is December 7th, 2021 at 1:30.
Good afternoon, I guess I should start with. So, this is, this is very similar to what was presented at the November 2nd meeting. I will note that there's been a slight adjustment to some of the numbers for the Electric Utility Fund since that posting and so this updates and reflects those changes as well. But we'd request that we set this notice of public hearing for December 7th at 1:30. We will make sure there's adequate time and notice posting the telegram so that we can continue forward with the public hearing at that time. And if you have any questions about any of the funds, I'd be most happy to answer those this time.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve publishing a notice of budget hearing for amending the 2021 budget to reflect actual 2021 expenditures. The proposed date and time of the hearing is December 7th, 2021 at 1:30 PM.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve change order number one of the Garden City Police Department Shooting Range Project for $34,246.85. Trent?
Mayor and Commissioners, at the April 6, 2021 commission meeting, the commission approved to award and execute, and execution of the contract for the Garden City Police Department Shooting Range Facility with Concom Inc. This proposed change order is to revise the finished floor of the range from a sealed concrete floor to a polished concrete floor. This change was requested by the government, Garden City Police Department and recommended by the architect Dan Finkhauser to reduce future maintenance. The project bid contains a $41,675 contingency allowance to allow staff to authorize minor changes in the work with a change order. This proposed change would use the majority of this allowance, leaving future minor changes to require change orders. Therefore, this proposed change is brought to the commission for consideration as a change order. Staff is also expecting a $2,640 reduction of costs consistent of plumbing and other miscellaneous modifications and reduction of the earthwork price bid at $50,477 due to earthwork over excavation being less than estimated. Thus, $18,117 of other savings have already been realized but are not yet formalized at this time. The alternatives, option one, approve change order number one, increasing the overall project budget by $34,246.85, leaving intact the original $41,675 for future contingencies. Alternative number two, do not approve the change order number one and direct staff to utilize existing contingency budget of $41,675, leaving $7,428.15 for future contingencies. Number three, do not approve the recommended changes to the polished concrete floor. Staff recommends alternative number one. The cost of the rank, of the change order will be incurred by the sales tax funding for the shooting range. If you have any questions for myself, we do have some representatives of the police department, I believe Randy and Chief are here if you have questions for them.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So, alternative two, so are you saying so that $7,428.15 does not realize the two savings that you indicated?
Correct. Those are savings that are, are seen, they're just not formalized yet, so they will be coming at a future date.
So, I'm curious about why wouldn't we choose alternative two rather than raise that and then use additional tax dollars? Because I know our last project is gonna be a fire station. I know that budgets on that have changed a lot just because of building costs, so I'm, I'm curious, why wouldn't we want to preserve as much of that sales tax for our last, you know, one big project?
No, great question. The purpose for bringing it as a change order is give the option to, if we take it immediately out of the 41,675 and whatever savings we may have with the 18,177 or 117, that may eat up some of that pretty quick with other changes that may come as the project continues. If we take it out, we're leaving 7,000 and then what the future savings may be, 18 to add to that.
18 and 2.
We may be coming back again and again. It was the idea. 34 is a larger change order than probably what is typical for a project like this.
Are you anticipating additional or are they anticipating additional?
It's for unforeseen contingencies, so this was not determined early on to include a polished floor over a sealed floor. So, had it be, the, the contract amount would be a little bit more. We felt it was important enough to provide you guys the option to, to direct it as well as make that decision of how that polished floor happens. Garden City Police Department recommended the change due to maintenance, so I think there's value in it. It's just how do we want those dollars? And if we spend the remaining contingency dollars, which would be approximately $25,000, we're gonna be coming back to you again and again and that, that's what we were trying to not account for a $3,000 or $4,000 change orders in the future. Any of these options are obviously alternatives, so...
And so, the cost for the polishing concrete is actually $26,500 because you would save the supervision labor of $4,633 and the overhead percentage of 10% of $3,113. I'm reading this off the AIA contract, the change order.
Yes.
So, there's another savings there if you just went ahead and did contingency dollars instead of a change order?
Yeah. And I think where the other savings has not been formalized yet is the reason why we're not counting on that 18,177 is being effective and immediately changing to 34,000.
I haven't, I don't have a problem with, I mean, I think doing this is a, is a great change. I do think it'll save maintenance in the, in the, and just how we pay for it is what I'd rather see us really allocate dollars that we already, I mean, we have a contingency for that. I know this is a big one, but I mean, I, I mean, from what I'm understanding, we're pretty far along in the project. I mean, I, I don't know if we're, or are we?
We've, we've got walls.
We've got walls.
There's probably a bit left to do, but they're making great progress, so...
And just to note, on the AIA document, I think there is an error with the 10% fee of a comma. It looks like $3,113,000.
Right.
But, yeah, it should be a period instead of comma, just a little minor issue.
That'd be great savings.
Yeah. That'd be great savings there.
So, so, Trent, I understand the idea you had to come back for like change orders all the time if we don't approve it, like with option one. You said you'd have to come back for...
If there's minor ones that present themselves and our contingency allowance is gone, I think that was the idea, to give you guys the options of how you want to proceed of, with potential future change orders.
And alternative one would achieve that, right? Where we wouldn't, you wouldn't have to come back all the time with change orders?
Another change order that was made to do with the ceiling tiles. I don't know if you remember that. That was a very small amount, just over $2,000. So, instead of bringing those items to you for review every time, that would be the idea.
Entertain a motion on this item. I'll make a motion to approve the change order number one, increasing the overall project budget by $34,246.85, leaving intact the original $41,675 for future contingencies. Alternative number one.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any other discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Thank you.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of a 2022 6.4-liter gasoline engine Dodge Ram 5500 four-by-two dump truck for $68,000. 6.4-liter gasoline engine Dodge Ram 5500 four-by-two dump truck for $68,948 from Master Tech Truck and Equipment. Aaron?
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you is a bid for a two-ton dump truck. We did put this out to several dealers, including our locals here, and I don't know if you're aware, trucks are really hard to come by right now. So, the Dodge is the lowest quoted price for the truck that met specs, being gasoline engine with the proper horsepower and torque, and that's why there you have the recommendation from staff, alternative one, to purchase that truck for $68,948. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the purchase of a two-ton Dodge Ram 5500 dump truck for $68,948.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Just a quick question, I guess, Aaron, do you know, do these trucks, being diesel and stuff, do they have a depreciation value quicker than a normal unleaded fuel vehicle?
So, make sure I understand your question, does a diesel truck have a lower depreciation than a gasoline engine?
A faster depreciation? Or, I guess, could you depreciate it?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I could tell you why we spec gasoline over diesel, which is because of the nature of what we're doing with the truck. We're a lot of in-town short goes. We are hauling, but we're not heavy hauling concrete all the time.
Yeah.
Over the life, when we replace parts and, and those kind of items, it does tend to be cheaper with a gasoline engine over a diesel, when you're not putting the stress of towing and hauling that would require you to step up to that diesel engine.
Okay.
Item E, the governing body has asked to consider and appoint Dana Ontiveros to fill the vacant seat on the Community Health Advisory Board.
Perfect timing, my watch was just asking me to stand up, so. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As Matt said, we are requesting that Dana Ontiveros be appointed to the vacant seat on the Community Health Advisory Board. If you remember back in July, there was a meeting where, I believe, two or three new members were appointed, and importantly, Colleen Dries was moved from her spot as the Effany County Health Department representative to just the general community spots, and she's transitioned over to the school district. And so, that spot remained open for a while, and so the Community Health Advisory Board has voted to nominate Dana Ontiveros, who is, to create the exact view of her position, the charge nurse at the health department to fill that spot.
Yeah, I move that we appoint, approve the CHAB recommendation to appoint Dana Ontiveros to open Finney County Health Department's spot.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ready for the consent agenda? If approved, it would be Items F1 through 5.
I move to approve consent agenda, Items F1 through 5.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
We're ready for commission reports.
Commissioner Euler.
This is a nice, quick meeting today. Good job, Mayor. Actually, I enjoyed the pre-meeting. Stuart, thank you so much for all the work that you've done, working with Michael Knudsen and with the commission through this process. I'm very excited, I think that this is just the start of many murals in our community, and so I'm, I just can't wait to see what we come up with, and, or what Michael comes up with, and, and the process, so I'm, I'm just real excited about that. Enjoyed being a part of the Veterans Day parade, and I wanted to thank Tyler Patterson for driving me around through it, and we had a really good time, we had a chance to visit with the fire department, and, and then we also had an opportunity to look at the Highway Patrol's new Dodge Charger, and with the ghost decal on the side, it was pretty impressive to see. And so, they can go 180 miles an hour for anybody who's listening, and so it's very fast. But anyway, it was very, it was fun to be a part of that. Also, to be a part of the legislation, legislative appreciation dinner in Dodge City, that was always a good opportunity to visit with, you know, people from around southwest Kansas, so thanks to the southwest Kansas Chambers of Commerce for hosting that, it was a really nice event. I'm also excited to see, at our last meeting, Barb Larson came and talked about safety on bike trails, and especially on Tally Trail, and she actually got ahold of me to say thank you for all of the work that has been done since then. The bush has been trimmed back pretty far on Third Street, but then also a lot of the striping that's going on, and it was kind of fun on Marion Third, I kind of had to meander around that today as they're doing some work, so she was very, very appreciative of that, wanted me to make sure that I said that. Also, congratulations to Mike on your award, I mean, it's one of many, but you do a really good job for this city, and so thank you. And then I'm just excited to have another person fill a spot on our advisory boards. I mean, I'm always a big advocate of people stepping up and being a part of the process, and advisory boards are just a great opportunity to do so, so thank you so much for that, and, and then, of course, the Highway 156 and Jenny Barker Road Project, that, that'll be interesting to see what we end up with there as a solution, so, that's all.
All right, Commissioner Dick?
All right, first, congratulations, Mike, on the award. Always great to have awards, but also great to have great people in our city, so congratulations to that. Thanks, like Deb said, or Commissioner Euler said, for, Stuart, for putting together the mural, the whole process, and, and it was a good pre-meeting with Mikey Knudsen, learning about how that's going to go and everything, so that's good. The other two things is, remember, like we had proclamation about match day, on giving Tuesday coming up, that is a huge time to give back to our community, where that money stays local, it's matched by local people, which increases the amount of giving that each person does, and amplifies it for each of our local community organizations, so please consider giving, and like Connie said, that is open now, so you can give, if you want to give a little bit of money before Black Friday, that'd be great. So, and then the last thing is just, just keep in mind that Thanksgiving is coming up, and, and please be safe when everybody travels, please look out for everybody else, and also enjoy the time you have with your friends and family. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Enru?
So, I also want to comment on the pre-meeting, I really appreciated just the detail and the energy and the creativity of Michael Knudsen, I'm really excited about the mural, and I like Commissioner, other Commissioners, I really appreciate local art, and then having the opportunity, hopefully, to do many, many more. I do want to say, congratulations to Mike Muirhead, and I'll tell you, who shows up for these things, and Mike, you have a cast of characters who showed up to honor you, and so, but I mean, a lot of people don't travel that far to honor someone, and so that really speaks highly, not only of your character, but also of your contribution. So, them coming, hopefully, you're going to do something with them, so they didn't travel out here, we have lots of great restaurants, and so hopefully, they didn't already go home, so. I do want to say, I, I want to make mention of K Dot's Roundabout, I am a fan of roundabouts, and you heard him say that they were willing to pay for it, that's how much they believe in them. Years ago, we bought a guy out of Fenton, I just lost his first name, and he talked about Mark Fenton, and he talked about, you know, really the safety, and it's really a safety issue, and also this idea of what that looks like now. The only roundabouts I am not a fan of, a fan of, is in Hayes. I recently was there, and, okay, I, I got lost, but I think this really sets itself up, and then having someone step out and say that, he didn't get it in writing, which I wish he would have, but he did say it on video, so we do have recordings of that. But having them pay for something, I think that's an important, and it also is an important entrance into our city, so. I did have a resident stop me and say, you know, all of these really great sales tax projects, you know, a lot of other communities talk about, you know, they celebrate, hey, this is your sales tax completed, or, you know, job well done, or your sales tax dollars, so they suggest that we do some signs, especially like Jenny Barker, and even at the zoo, or some of these sales tax projects, so that people know that these are the things that they paid for. I mean, we recently had a local election, and I'm going to tell you that sales tax pass over warmly, and that, but that doesn't come without people's trust. And so, I think sometimes, like letting people know that these were your sales tax dollars that you said yes to, so I thought it was a really great idea, if there's something we can do affordably and not use a lot of money. But this idea of really celebrating those sales tax projects, to let them know that these are things that you said you wanted, and then you voted for, so I really like that idea. I do want to comment on the match day, I had the opportunity to be a part of Western Kansas Community Foundation early on, at that point, we were only at $3 million, so hearing $50 million is incredible, but the Western Kansas Community Foundation is not only here to stay, but it impacts 16 counties in western Kansas, so it's not just Effany County, but it really impacts a lot of organizations and impact many other places. I mean, this is really, western Kansas, southwest Kansas is our neighborhood, you know, this is our community, but southwest Kansas is our neighborhood, and we have a lot of people who come here. Having the Western Kansas Community Foundation located here, and the, and the work that they do is so important, and $100,000 worth of mansion dollars is absolutely incredible. I also want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, I also appreciate all of those who went out to vote, it was a, it was a, kind of a dreary day, but we really appreciate you going out and to vote, and I'll tell you, it was really exciting to see the turnout, and then also just your support of our sales tax agenda. Have a happy Thanksgiving, and we are looking forward to seeing you in December.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Okay, thank you, I think mostly everything was said. Match day, mural, Mike, congratulations, I think some of the things that we kind of have to talk about too, are the positions like the advisory board, I mean, it's, I think the last time I saw on the website that there was like 13 vacancies on some of our, a lot of our boards, and so I don't know what the number is now, but hopefully, it's kind of dwindled down, and we've got those positions filled, so, I mean, what a great way to get involved with the city and the community is to just get on some of those boards and, and be heard, and share your ideas and thoughts with, with the city and, and city commissioners and mayor, so thank you for those who are serving, especially thank you to the Veterans Day, that was, seemed, I wasn't able to be here for that to celebrate, but it seemed like all the photos on Facebook that I've seen were amazing, and good job to those who were taking pictures, it was, it looked like a great event. I did not hear about the fireworks, though, I don't know if that happened.
Yeah, I did.
Awesome, so yeah, and that's one thing that I was looking for pictures, but I didn't see any, and I know, I know it was probably, went off well, so thanks for all those who served as well, so, yeah, a good tie-in with the match day, and then also being near Thanksgiving, this is a time to just be involved and, and help one another, love each other, be there for each other. But yes, a lot of things that we kind of hit and didn't talk about, some of the things, but also just like to thank the different departments. Commissioner Euler, you've mentioned the, the streets, and then being crosswalks, extended thanks to those for, whoever's involved in the streets and putting up those signals and new, new stripes on the road for crossing, so Barb, yeah, it, it shows that when you come in here and, and talk and, and share your opinions about something, things get done, and that's, that's amazing about the city departments here, and, you know, the head, head of those departments that get those crews out there, especially thanks to those crews who are working out there in those unsafe conditions, so extend those thanks to those workers who are out there on the ground, so. Also, with like, and I don't know, I emailed Matt over a weekend ago, and he probably sent it on to Aaron with Parks probably, but, you know, there was a flag out there just before Veterans Day, and it was, it was kind of ratty and torn, and I kind of sent an email, and that, like, got done within hours, so that was, I mean, that was amazing, I got the thanks of that, but I'm like, you know, these need to be sent on to those workers and who get out there quickly and get the jobs done, so. So, thanks, Aaron and Parks, and then Municipal Court, so Jennifer, thanks for that, the mural idea was a wonderful thought, I'm sure that's going to be awesome to see once it's finished, so, and then discussions about Inside's Courts, so with those walls, those big blank walls that might have some, some things on there too, so looking forward to that. Another thing is just to shop local, I know with like holidays coming around, support your local businesses, I, I, and not only, you know, we've got some big box stores, you know, you can also support those, and those are local dollars that, you know, we get taxes from, so those big box stores are local, they're in our city, but, you know, they keep me, you know, especially my barber, they keep me looking fresh, and my designer, you know, caps, thanks, see, I threw a name out there, so, yeah. No, just, just appreciate everything that Garden City has to offer in the city of Garden City and in the, in the county, so thanks for all those involved in making a difference.
Just wanted to thank Mike, the award really does show that we have outstanding staff. When our staff gets awards like these, it really highlights that we do have exceptional staff in our community. The other Commissioners touched on a lot of topics, just wanted to mention that I did also attend the local Chambers of Commerce Legislative Agenda Session, I also attended the League of Kansas Municipalities Legislative, their Legislative Agenda Session for legislators and well as local leaders, so everybody's starting to get ramped up for, for those, and meeting on those meetings. Just wanted to, I know everybody else did mention match day, but that's very important in our community, you know, giving is, and being philanthropic is one of our highlights that we have in our community and really stands out, so just be mindful of, as we get, I know it's started, but as we get closer to the holidays, just be mindful of, of your fellow human being and what they're going through. This week, I did do a proclamation at the beginning of the week for American Education Week, and that's this week, Monday, November 15th through the 19th, just highlighting the week of great things going on. Monday was Mini Grant Day for the Garden City Public Schools Foundation, today is Thank an Educator Day, Wednesday's Healthy Snack Day for the district promoting health and wellness, Thursday is Support Staff Day, as well as the Crystal Apple Teacher Recognition Banquet in the evening, where we highlight six teachers, and then we have three teachers that are named Crystal Apple Teachers. So, again, highlighting teachers and teaching and education in our community, and then Friday is Alma Mater Day. And then next week, there will be no school for the week because of in-services, and of course, the fall vacation for everyone, so again, have safe travels and hope everyone stays safe during the holidays. On that note, I call this meeting adjourned.